Wow.
That's really good with you.
It's my own fault.
I know.
Because I threw my strategy out.
Yeah.
He worked at the end.
Yeah.
My intention was to shave, um, seaweed.
And, uh, so I did.
So you really would have been well.
Yeah.
But I said, uh, if you want to tell me that.
I do.
With a little more.
You're on your own.
It's not all your, like, yeah.
Like this, where I don't use it.
Everything that you are working towards, like.
Good night. It's amazing.
I'll be fresh.
All right, we'll get started. Um, and we'll take a roll call to start off the evening. We know that Niles isn't here, so I'm the lucky winner. And, um, is there anyone else that's in the same?
Yes.
And I would love to welcome Jane Dyers, the board.
Thank you.
Um, we're very happy to have you, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, um, hopefully we, we show off a little bit tonight and get out a little early.
Okay.
There you go. That's what we try to do when we have new board members. Nice.
Gives you a false sense of what's going on.
Absolutely.
So we'll, we'll be out here by seven thirty.
Um, so, um, great, there's no adjustments to the agenda, so we'll dive right in and welcome anyone from the community who'd like to address the board this evening to step right up. And please introduce yourselves as well.
Good evening. My name is Alex Patel. I'm a parent of a student that attends Hampden Academy, a licensed marriage and family therapist, and an advocate for the local LGBT QIA community. I'm here to address the increase in safety concerns within the school based on a recent posting to social media threatening violence towards gay students. I understand that the administration has taken appropriate steps to address the specific incident. However, I'd like to know of any plans to address the general shift in culture that has occurred within the school community and across our nation that has emboldened students to express such hateful sentiments or to support a student making serious threats against other students. Sorry, I'm nervous. I'm very concerned that there are many students in opposition to the recent suspension and encouraging a reversal of this decision. But I'm not here necessarily to debate the course of action needed to address this specific incident, but seeking instead to initiate a larger discussion about the need for systemic changes that would return a sense of safety for, for all students. As a therapist, I was hearing last week an increase in incidents of hate speech and harassment targeting minority students at many schools across our area. So I know that it's not unique to our town or to our school, yet I'd like to see Hampden set an example for how to address these issues. Since the incident occurred, I'm hearing that minority students and their allies are feeling somewhat fearful to claim their alliances or to support one another publicly. Based on the recent incident, I understand why students might feel that way. However, I'd like to see administration take some action to help those feeling marginalized to feel empowered again to be open, to be themselves, and to be outwardly welcoming and embracing of diversity.
Thank you very much. Very important topic, one that we recently discussed with the recent transgender policy, gender identity policy, and perhaps we, we turn it to the board, we'll ask the admin to maybe have a discussion and come back to the board as to how you might be addressing that issue.
We can do that, yes.
So we'll add it to a future agenda, and please stay tuned so that if you are able to come back. Any other people going, wanting to address? And related to that topic, I know the board, some board members had an interest in being part of trainings or sessions about that topic as well.
Yes.
Great.
We need to go back and approve the minutes.
Oh, I forgot that part.
Say it.
I'll do it. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Just ask a follow-up.
Oh, yes.
So is there any immediate plan of action? You said that the plan is to put it on an agenda and come back to it, but in the meantime, students are.
I can tell you, Alex, I've, I've had meetings with some administrators thus far, but I would say in the very near future, meaning two to three weeks, we'll be having a, a meeting to bring that to the agenda for the full administrative team to begin to tease out what you're suggesting tonight and what Karen has alluded to. So we'll be coming up with some strategies. We also are reaching out with our support staff, our psychologists. We have some behavioral health interventions with Acadia Hospital, guidance counselors, people like that also be part of that conversation.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we do need to approve the minutes. I apologize for jumping around on the agenda, um, but I would ask if anyone could make a motion to approve the minutes from November second's meeting.
Some.
And any, um, discussion needed? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Angela.
She might have watched it on YouTube.
Well, that's good.
I did have the minutes.
Well, that's good.
Your homework.
I did. Didn't want to come blind.
Great. Oh, right. Um, so I don't have anything to add for Board Chair, so personnel, right?
I did put on the Board Chair, and I should have told you.
Oh.
You do have your subcommittee assignments that Chair Parker has distributed this evening, so please take a look at those. If you choose to, uh, make a change, add, delete, or modify in any way, please just send Niles an email, and we'll make sure that happens. Hopefully, what is printed there is basically represents what you've sent in as far as your preferences. And we try to, just for the board members, all board members' awareness, we try to strike the balance among our four communities. We try to look at what you put in for offers, and Niles and I email that on Monday to also reflect from our perspective what you bring as far as your understanding, role expertise, your involvement over the years, and so on. So if you have any suggestions, please send it on to Niles, I'd say in the next week or two, because these committees obviously are, have been operational, will continue to be operational. I will make a note, and I see Michelle, Michelle's way in the back, we hope to have our first negotiation session with our support staff in early December.
Yes.
Okay?
I was gonna say.
How good you think I am in a negotiation. So I will be in contact with you, okay?
All right.
So please let Niles know if you have any suggestions. Thank you, Karen. Superintendent's report under personnel, we have no resignations, no nominations this evening. So one of the superintendent's reading of essential behaviors outcomes proclamation this evening is Alan. Alan?
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our community share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome, welcome and encourage all members of our community to participate, and our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and communities.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Alex, it strikes me that that statement embeds exactly what you talked about tonight to a very large degree that Alan just said. Thank you. Okay, last week, I was joined with Regan and Lori at the Blue Ribbon Ceremony. They're going to give you an overview of the ceremonies that took place in Washington, DC, where the ladies had their pictures taken and other things as well. So everybody has a guest speaker, so Regan and Lori, please.
I'm a teacher at Reeds Brook, and Regan and I were honored to be the representatives from Reeds Brook at the Blue Ribbon, National Blue Ribbon School Ceremony, uh, that actually was in Arlington through the Department of Education. So we brought a few artifacts, and I'm actually gonna send some papers down, just a little presidential greeting, you know, just a few things like that.
So, um, the gathering at Washington DC was, of course, inspirational. You realize once you're there that you're really among the best of the best, and they certainly treated us that way. We were able to have opportunities to certainly network with other schools, and one of the artifacts we're passing around is just a collection of all of the schools' names and their quick profiles, so that you can get an idea of the breadth of the types of institutions that are out there with Blue Ribbon. But we also were, um, certainly treated to several speakers, and I would say that we came away from those experiences definitely finding a coalesced message. And I would describe the message to you as, um, you are certainly doing many things right and wonderful. Congratulations on having the Blue Ribbon, but what will you do next? And urging us on to make those around us rise and be better, and to certainly look inside ourselves to do that. So I think we've certainly taken that call and intend to work with the Reeds Brook staff and also with other schools in RSU 22 to, um, come to the next level. Um, I'll share a quick snippet, and I'm sure Lori and Rick both have their own, but I would say that sometimes I think we get a bit cynical, that those in leadership, especially when you think of DC, kind of outside of the normal goings-on of a school, not necessarily in touch. We heard from Secretary King, Secretary of Education. I was immensely impressed. I was very much impressed with his ability to articulate what schools are facing and how he seemed to understand the on-the-ground workings of schools and could speak to what needed to happen for them. But what I also was very impressed with is he spoke for ten to fifteen minutes and then just simply said, "I'm now ready for your questions," and remained for Q and A for half an hour or more, just taking any question from the five hundred people in the room about a number of things. Now, remember, we were there on Election Day. So the room had a, a temperature to it.
Yes.
And, uh, he was fantastic, as, as, of course, I'm sure that's why he was selected to be Secretary of Education as well. But, uh, it's nice to know those are the hands that we are in, and it's really important, I think, that we stay the course and understand that education has some roots that, uh, we just need to keep studying and, and working with. So another exciting thing is that Reeds Brook was asked by the Blue Ribbon Commission to be one of the, I would say there are probably, um, twenty-five to thirty schools that were invited to go in-depth about a specific topic at their school that had stood out in their application. And our, um, topic was around our school garden and family and community engagement. So Lori and I did a presentation, uh, multiple times. I think we did it five, six times.
Six.
Uh, and she'll tell you more about it as well, but we came away feeling like we're certainly doing good things, but there's more to be done, and I think we're empowered to do it.
From my angle as a teacher, um, it was a mix of emotions through all this, all of this process. First, being invited to apply for the award was very validating, you know, to be recognized for the performance of our students, and obviously, um, you know, the teachers work in that. Um, but then to receive the award, I mean, it just, nothing feels better than to say, "Yeah, I think we're doing, we're doing some pretty good stuff." But then that feeling of now what? And that feeling that, you know, some days it, you're just kind of slogging along over, and, and all you can think of is, "Oh, I didn't have a planned period today," you know, it's just, you get kind of down in the trenches and you forget what, what the bigger picture is. So there was that back-and-forth kind of feeling while, while I was there as a teacher. The presentation part was, was kind of neat because when Regan and I first got our, our, our staff got our stuff from the Blue Ribbon, um, we said, "We'd like to invite you to present, um, the hoop house." And we went, "The hoop house?" Of all the things we do, the hoop house? Okay, so we'll do the hoop house. But it was really kind of neat talking to our staff, everybody that's been involved in the hoop house and the garden project all along, and really recognizing how much community participation there has been. If you ever drive by during the summer, uh, there's hoses everywhere, there's parents, there're kids, you know, they're, they're weeding, they're fixing. Uh, the Boy Scouts, uh, one of the Boy Scouts did his Eagle Scout project and built a shed over there that's gorgeous. I thought it was a tiny house, but it wasn't. So, you know, there's a lot of community engagement, a lot of things going on. Our kids are out there, they're eating off the salad bar, fresh food, uh, fresh food from the garden in the, uh, early, uh, late spring and early fall. Um, so once you start putting it together, it's like, yeah, you know, we kind of have a little special thing going on here that you don't see everywhere. And as we did our presentations, we were just overwhelmed with response. People couldn't believe that we have this going on in our district and, and wanted to know more, and, you know, we're thinking back in their own districts how they could, you know, kind of have the same practices. So another, kind of an affirmation of all the hard work that, you know, Karylyn Marzula and, and Brittany has put in, and then, you know, Clear Coal, we have, you know, a million parents that have really jumped in and really made that a success. So that was really neat.
I'll jump in. I was very impressed with the keynote speaker, the National Teacher of the Year. It was a man that teaches, uh, high school in the Center for the Arts from Baltimore, Maryland. His title of his presentation was "Fertile Ground: Creating Conditions for Teachers to Thrive and Students to Flourish." Kind of goes back to what Alex brought our attention, but I wrote down, I took a picture of his comments, but they're gonna send the PowerPoint, but here's three comments that struck me. Now, this is coming from a teacher, so take it from the teacher's perspective. The first comment is, "It's my personal approach that creates the climate." It's my personal approach that creates the climate. "It's my daily mood that makes the weather." That one struck me for some reason. A daily mood. So just visualize yourself, Jane, as a teacher, right?
Oh, yeah.
Your daily mood creates the weather. As a teacher, I possess a tremendous power to make a child's life miserable or joyous.
That's true.
And when you say those, those sound so simplistic, but as a teacher, as we heard from Sue tonight, National Teacher, um, recipient and designation thereof, is how you do that every single minute, every single day. And he did a marvelous job, just, uh, you know, really gaining your attention. I mean, he had probably five hundred people in that lecture, and we were there for an hour and a half, and it was like you were there ten minutes. It was, it was great. A couple of, uh, they also ran a number of concurrent sessions. You're probably gonna chuckle at this title. The title of the session was, "I Didn't Pick These People: How to Work with Difficult Staff Members." But gets back to climate again, cohesiveness, focus on one purpose, uh, and, and moving a school district forward. And one from the breaking ranks, "Ten Skills for Successful School Leaders." So it was a great conference. What I was most proud of, it really focused on the principal and the teacher, it wasn't about the superintendent. You know, you try to stay in the back and let the teacher and the principal, because that's where it really was done, you know, meets the, uh, in, in the school setting and so on. It was, it was really nice. I did notice, I didn't meet, uh, the other two schools for me, I'm assuming you two ladies did.
We did, yes. The other two schools, there were only three for me chosen this round, so.
Right.
Falmouth Middle School and Seerode Elementary.
Yes.
From kind of.
So very powerful session, three good days, and it was, uh, very well attended. Any questions for our two ladies? Blue Ribbon Schools, a standard of excellence.
Congratulations, that's quite a.
We're going to pass the plaque around so you can see. I think they did a very nice job with that award.
Could the board consider getting a very impressive Blue Ribbon to put on the Main Street sign if it's in middle school?
Uh, are they going, are they going to send us, they are going to send us a banner, right?
They actually have sent us home with a flag, and we are flying that at Reeds Brook right now.
Yes.
And we also have a banner. Uh, we did put the banner out in front of our school, uh, for the first couple of days with parent-teacher conferences, but we could tell over the weekend the weather was probably going to be an issue, so we're gonna put that up in our gymnasium.
But you also have it on your school website.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
And our Facebook page.
And Facebook, fine. Okay, now.
Good job on Facebook.
But I was thinking, of something that would be visible to a, a large number of people, because that would be the most visible place, right there on the signs on Main Street.
Yes. Okay, good idea.
Well, one thing about Lori is she is crafty. So on our plane ride home, we were talking about what to do, so she's got big, big ideas going right now about Blue Ribbons.
Two hundred yards and mail tomorrow, Amazon Prime. All right, just let me know how much it costs.
Like you always do.
I always do.
After, after the fact.
I think, I think I'd speak for both of us that we would like to say thank you for supporting our trip there. I think it really was something that was not only memorable, but, uh, really helped us to be among some people that really motivate and inspire, so thank you for supporting us.
Okay, thank you, ladies. Okay, our two student reps.
Gentlemen. Uh, I always start, you wanna start?
Yeah, I'll start, you go for it. So not much going on right now. Um, winter sports are, uh, signups are beginning, so that's definitely a big thing. Uh, here's another gold ball this year. Key Club, uh, they're having a food and supply drive for the Bangor Community Society for the entire month of November. Dog food, blankets, toys, you name it, anything to help dogs and cats. That's definitely something to check out. I love dogs, so. Had to mention that. Uh, yeah, that's about all I had.
Um, yeah, uh, not so much happening right now because we're in that in-between spot. This is really nice. That's cool. Um, so, yeah, we're in that in-between seasons period, but, uh, I, the college process is kind of crazy for seniors right now, but being in it myself, and Guidance is offering tutoring sessions right in that room over there actually during the day, which is really, um, helpful. Uh, second, NHS, I think you all received an email about a photo shoot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's taking place on Sunday from ten to two-thirty, and last year we did it, and, um, Mariah was actually the photographer, and I think she talked about it. And, um, yeah, it was such a success, and we still have some spots available for signups, so, um, it's going to benefit the RSU 22 Backpack Fund. And, yeah, so if you, uh, want to, uh, swing by. Uh, second, tomorrow is our Fall Jazz Night, and, uh, I was in rehearsals a lot today with the guest artist who's here. His name's Brad Terry. He is internationally known and is a phenomenal, phenomenal player net player, learned all of his music by ear, uh, doesn't even know how to read music, and is, he's played with some of the greats. And, uh, yeah, he's also a, uh, very well-established whistler, which is interesting. So if you're free tomorrow night, starting at six-thirty is our, um, Bass Concert, and it includes, uh, schools from all over the district, and, yeah, it should be a good time. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Emily?
Uh, nothing more than what's in your update that you received last week.
Thank you, Karen.
That was quick. Any questions from the board? Yes, Jason?
Does that district do any compliance, like annual compliance training for, you know, make sure we're up to date on, like, all of our policies, regulations, and stuff like that? Or is that just something that we assume people know?
Not, not specifically on looking at the policies. We have update, uh, certain update on things such as restraint training. Um, Lynn, Lynn help me out, because Lynn oversees a lot of that. So restraint training, help me out, Lynn. CPR, training.
We seem to have part of the restraint training.
Right.
Chemical hazard.
Chemical hazard training.
We do the, the nurses do much more.
Yeah, right. Lee and Mary and Nate and Becky Moore are at a, a training session, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. They'd probably be able to chime in too, but, but certainly, Jason, we don't do anything as far as having someone come in and review our policies, regulations, though we can do that. Main School of Management at a very nominal fee will come in and do that for us, but we've never done that.
Yeah, 'cause I was just thinking, the reason it came to mind is I'm finishing up my yearly compliance training.
Right, right.
And it's a really, a refresher, you know, if you have a corporate card, you have to take a course on.
Right.
What can you use your card for, what can't you do it for, if you try, so I just wondering if we do anything here with all the policies that we.
What we do do though, Jason, is I have a list of the required policies and recommended policies, and that's our guiding principle, and we're, we're A-plus on that right now. But that changes every year too.
Yeah.
But we, we say, you know, once in a while we slip behind not updating something the way it should be updated, but we do have every required and every recommended policy.
Yeah, I, I specifically asked that at our last policy session, and, uh, as Rick said, the, the list of required policies is kind of driven down, uh, from our audit list.
Yes, yes.
And to the extent that our policies are derived from a, maybe a, uh, standard language that we adopt.
Cool.
They're compliant with that, but clearly some of our policies have been created over time, and, you know, they're sort of customized for the school, although they do tie into other examples.
Right.
I mean, we really revisit those.
And we stand.
They don't have a formal, uh, you know, audit from that standpoint, because each just.
Yeah, that's not really what I'm talking about.
Yeah, you're talking about.
Like, we have two hundred and some odd, we have two hundred and some odd employees, and, I mean, just the ones that deal with our committees, I'm on, is a stack of policies. I just wonder, do we just assume that everybody knows what they are, or do we actually test their knowledge on?
Right.
That's a, yeah, that's a good question. Uh, we don't test their knowledge.
Okay. Especially with all the new teachers coming in and.
But we do, okay, for example, and these are just little snippets, but when we have new teacher orientation, I select the policies I think are extremely relevant to them. For example, staff contact with students is a good one.
That's.
Internet use, these things like that, so we go over that. But I think you bring up a good point in the sense of how we stay on top of that as well. I'm drawing a blank, and I apologize, but Dan Stewart just sent us out an email two or three days ago that said we had to take the, uh, online certificate program to be renewed for another five years, and I can't remember the theme of it. I'm looking at your Regan, our email, can you help me out there?
Five years.
It's something that we did five years ago, now we need to renew it, whatever it is. But those are other things that come to us that way too, Jason. Yeah, so.
No, no formal in-service.
No formal in-service, no.
That's enough.
But, but Jason's topic is a good, that's a massive, massive awareness for, for any business, and we're a business from that perspective, to make sure that people are well-informed of that.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll go right into committee reports, and does the Finance Committee have anything to report on?
No, uh, we have a meeting on December first, and we'll probably be scheduling another meeting in December. We'll talk about that after.
Yeah, Karen, I do have an update.
Okay.
Um, I wanted to kind of fill the board in on what's, the direction the Finance Committee's going on. So, um, as you know, when Emil, uh, and this is really kind of addressing what happened at the last board meeting, so when Emil announced that he was gonna be retiring, Keith, John, and I started having some conversations about the transition that was coming up, and who, who amongst us is really gonna know the finances of this district as we're looking for a replacement and what have you? So we've been working on an action plan, and we've been meeting with our administrators and what have you. In June, we did have a meeting, and just helped transition, because John, most likely is gonna be done in June, so the timing of him being done with Emil in June is not ideal when you think about a transition plan for the Finance Committee. So we did take a vote and switch the chairmanship. Who the chair of the Finance Committee really doesn't, that's not what this is about. But I do think that what happened at the last meeting, we did have an update to provide you that we'll wait and we'll give it to you after the audit, when we go through that official process, but there, the fact that during that meeting, when it was turned over for the Finance Committee update, that it was dropped on John, that he's the chairman, pretty unfair, when you think about the fact that we've been operating under a premise. The other thing that I think, and the reason I ask some of my questions, and, once again, this going on policy and procedure is, the Finance Committee is run by board members, and I welcome Alan, and I welcome Jessica. So we have five board members on the Finance Committee, of which actually run the Finance Committee, which is an official committee of the Board of, Board of Directors. Right? So as we move forward, you know, I just think it's gonna be important for anybody that wants to learn more about the Finance Committee, we're very open. We've been doing a lot of work, we've had a lot of conversations about what we want to do and where we're going to, um, and I just thought it was really unfortunate at our last meeting that that happened. And it really detracted from the work we're doing. Just so you know, our time plan's about thirty days behind, so now when we look at the budget coming up and those that are on the Budget Committee, we have some really good opportunities in this district to really re-figure where we put some of our resources and where we spend our money, and we're just kind of getting into that. But at this point, uh, we are really at risk of not being ready as a Finance Committee to be able to make those judgments going forward. Um, we have continued to ask for information. Some of it comes and what have you and we'll continue to work on that. But, um, when we come back after the audit, um, we probably will be scheduled, we'll be scheduling a meeting to, you know, kinda go where our next steps are. Um, but when we do come back to you, um, I just want you to be prepared for it. It may not be the exact same report out that you've received on your audits in the past. So, um, just out of respect for John and Heath.
I didn't hear what it was.
Uh, the finance committee and have been doing some really good work. John's a very smart man, so is Heath. Um, we've had some great discussions. So, um, I just thought there was, thought that as the, whatever I am on the finance committee, that, that needed to be addressed and hopefully it doesn't happen going forward. Um, and as a finance committee, as the five of us will continue to move forward as our ultimate goal. And what really started the conversation was, how are we gonna fund the items that we have coming up over the next couple of years? And how are we gonna find that money and do that without going back to the taxpayers and asking for more money? Especially if you live in here, you know what's going on, so. I won't take up any more time from that, but.
I just, I don't know where you're going with that, but I, I don't see any reason why our audit will be coming on any less than it has, any less stellar than it has in the last few years. I have no, I have no information that's come to me at least.
I'm, I'm not saying that it is gonna be anything different. I'm just saying as a finance committee, we are members of a board. And when we, when we come back and we discuss, we're the finance committee.
I think that the, um, I, and, so I'm gonna move this on because this isn't a committee report. This is something other than a committee report at this point in time. I think that there needs to be some discussions among the finance committee in terms of where the direction is. And I think it's important that our board have some discussions about where we want to be. Um, I think there's some disagreement and some discussion that needs to be taken place. And potentially it might not be in a public setting, um, but we have to have some conversations about how we move forward. So, um, the athletic committee, we haven't met since?
Yeah, we have not.
Uh, building committee, Jason, have you guys met?
No. What's in Emil's update?
No.
Negotiations not yet. Um, education committee?
Just met.
Uh, we just met and, uh, we spent the entire committee, we had two presentations today. One was by Sue O'Brien about the National Board Certification for Teachers and her real, she's promoting that throughout the district and hopefully has, um, several new teachers, uh, signed on to take that journey with her. Right? Um, and the first presentation was by Ruth Lyons and Gifted and Talented and how she's, um, promoting Gifted and Talented education for, for all, I'm gonna say it wrong probably, but not just those identified in the Gifted and Talented program, but really trying to create a culture of
enrichment.
enrichment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, do we have a, um, a UTC?
Yeah, I attended the last board meeting. Rather interesting. They, uh, they have a law enforcement program there. It's taught by a retired law enforcement officer from Old Town. I don't know if he was the police chief or what he did. And much of the discussions at the last meeting centered around making him what I believe is called an SRO, a resource officer.
Allowing him to be armed.
And he would actually become a member of the Penom Scott County Sheriff's Department while he's also instructing. So he serves a dual purpose. And if anybody has had much to do with the UTC, you'll find out there's a lot of dual purpose stuff going on because because of funding, you know, it's just a problem that they have. That was part of it. They're also in the process of, uh, doing their, their first ever evaluation of their teaching staff. And so, I've started hearing words up there I've heard here and didn't know much about, like Marzoni model and stuff like that. And that's a big undertaking because the United Technology Center is actually run by two guys. The director Greg Mitchell, I think is his last name.
Miller.
Miller, Greg Miller. And I follow the dean of students Marty Geyer. And they have like two or three support people and that's it. It's the two of them. And they're going to have to do all of this. And, uh, I happen to know somebody who was a administrator at the community college next door who retired. And I suggested they might wanna talk to him. I think he'll be coming on board to help them. But that's a major undertaking for two guys to take on to evaluate all those teachers, prepare that review. And if you've never been there, it's a real interesting place, you know? In the morning, those two guys stand at the door and greet every student coming through the door. And at night, they stand there and tell, say goodnight and discuss the day with them. I find that interesting. It's a truly, uh, a real teaching place, real interesting. But anyway, that's the major stuff that's going on is that review is gonna be a big issue.
We had a tour, what, three, two years?
A couple of points I would add now. We usually try to have our annual meeting in January, February up there with a little dinner and then a tour of the facility. So we'll try to do that again this year.
It was awesome.
Also, Alan brings up a good point. We have a school resource officer in our district. It might be valuable for Sergeant Stewart to come to present to the board. Kinda goes back a little bit to what Alex was talking about in the, uh, in the public, uh, conversation. Uh, my opinion on the Marzano initiative, I applaud them for that. That'll be a major, major, major undertaking.
I was gonna ask, do they have to abide by that, the law that is kind of, was the springboard for us to start working on that?
I believe so.
Some do, some don't. We heard that tonight from, uh, I think it might have been Sue, yeah, Sue, is that her overview? Because some of your teachers at UTC are not certified. They're licensed, like your welders and things like that. So yes and no would be the answer.
Right, so that's kind of interesting that the, um, non-traditional teacher would might be evaluated like a certified teacher.
Right, right. So it'll be interesting to see how that moves forward, Alan.
Great, thank you, Alan. Um, policy, I, I skipped over that. Um, we have some to consider, so I'll review then. Behavioral review?
We'll have an executive session, uh, this evening to discuss that.
Um, education foundation, Walling, anything on that?
They are looking at, or they just passed a, a new policy, um, that's gonna start, I don't know how to describe it, basically taxing all the funds that they hold on to, a very small amount. No more than like a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty dollars a year. Um, depending on how much it is, but it's a very, very small amount. Um, they're gonna start letting everyone know that has funds that they're holding on to, that they're gonna be doing that, in order to help kinda with their bottom line. Um, they just talked about it, it was last week. And they're gonna start notifying everyone who's, has funds there about it. They're looking at updating their website, trying to bring it to the twenty-first century. They've been talking about that for quite a while. Uh, talked about several different options. Uh, I think they're talking with the district, been talking with a couple of other people, trying to weigh out what's the best option for them. Uh, they tried to come up with some plans for students to help develop the website, but it sounds like, uh, HA does not have any students with those specific skills, uh, in the classroom that could help, so.
Peter Wood's gonna meet with Nate, uh, within the next couple of weeks. I met with Peter last week. Also, I'd encourage, note in your subcommittees, we didn't, we did not have Ed Foundation on there. If anyone has any interest in serving on the Ed Foundation, please let Niles or me know. Walling's in that capacity. But now Walling's moving on, so if you have an interest, please contact Niles or myself about what that means and so on. Thank you, Walling.
Do we have any from, do we have anyone on the SPRP CE?
Tony's been, but we need, that's another, that's another good one. We need a person that has an interest there. That's the Regional Board for the Southern Penom Scott Regional Program for Children with Exceptionalism. That's, that's what that stands for. And that means quarterly, correct?
If that, they, they throw out emails and nobody can ever get together to get a forum. And that was my problem. Their times were when I'm seeing my evening patients and, um, yeah. So, yeah, I think we, I went to two meetings in two years.
Yeah, that's been sporadic, that committee. But if you have an interest, uh, I can certainly talk to you about that as well.
Their budgets, mine, bottom line. The, the expenditure per student, it, I mean, it needs to be done, but it, yeah.
Um, Tivitz Fund, do you have anything on?
We have not met. Uh, no, there's nothing that's come up, uh, since we're, uh, before.
Ad hoc?
We made it through Monday, sorry, last year.
Great, thanks. Um, I'll give a quick ad, update. Well, do we have an update on the Assistant Super?
We can give one. Yeah, I can give one. I was gonna mention that when Jason was talking, but we did advertise, uh, the position of Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations today. Uh, so that's going to be going out, uh, on the, our website, uh, serving schools website, uh, main school management website. They'll be in the Bangor Daily News publication this weekend, next weekend. I tried to sneak one in there with Nesdeck, that's the New England School Division, but they wouldn't let me because you have to be a member of the organization or whatever. And I didn't wanna pay fifteen hundred dollars. But the other thing that the committee will be doing is be, will be, uh, rallying to look at the job description and I'd say kind of fine tune that, streamline that if you will, because it's pretty extensive right now. So the job description, the application's done. Uh, there are five, uh, questions on the applications that every applicant will have to answer because those are five standard questions the committee will have, in addition to the other fifteen questions that community members will ask. So that position's posted today and we're looking to refine the job description, so.
Yeah, yeah, and hopefully we'll be meeting mid to late January to review.
Yes, Tony?
Have we had any internal candidates express interest?
I have had, yes, yes, informally. Now, the application, uh, the posting internally was done today, right around meantime. So I expect the next couple of weeks that hopefully we'll see some strong interest.
Great, and just a quick update, the board evaluation, Ad Hoc Committee met, um, as well last week. And it was very, I thought, very good, productive discussion, even though we were all kind of burnt. But, um, we will be bringing some recommendations to the board retreat in December for a discussion. And I'll be crafting that, sending that up to Ad Hoc and for a preview before we disseminate.
Former Chair P will facilitate our strategic planning session December seventh. Emil, Niles, and I'll be meeting with him, I think it's next week when we have to prepare for December seventh.
Great, thank you. So, that's it for committee updates. Let's go into the policy consideration and we have quite a, a stack, um, for you and hopefully, hopefully you all have had an opportunity to review. I'll just go through each one relatively quickly, assuming you've read them. And, um, then we'll ask for a motion and then open it up for discussion and questions after. The first policy we're asking for first reading on is, um, or bringing to you for first reading is policy BEDH, Public Participation in Board Meetings. This one, the policy committee reviewed over a three-month period. Um, we thought, um, the end product is, um, a good balance between establishing kind of a, um, a code of ethics in a sense of, you know, how best we'd like, um, kinda setting the standard for, to make sure that the feedback we receive is, um, informative but also respectful. Um, and, um, we wanted to make sure too that we always were keeping freedom of speech, um, in mind. And, um, so this is not at all intended to silence the community, but more so that, um, we can make sure that we have those, um, codes, code of conduct essentially in place. So, that is, um, up for, uh, first reading. The next policy is JICK, the bullying policy. There was just one insertion within that, um, policy to bring it in line with the changes in statute. Um, so other than that, there was no changes. This is, um, this policy is, is mandated by main state law, so. And, um, the next polit, the last policy up for first reading is policy JJIBA, Hiring and Evaluation of Coaches, which I can't believe we never brought this forward. I did not find it in the minutes. So I don't think we ever did it.
Cause I know the policy committee looked at that back in.
We dropped it.
Never.
I think, yeah, it never brought it. Um, we got sidetracked with the supervision, um, a different policy we're trying to push through for SMAR. So we got distracted. Anyway, this policy's been sitting on our books for a long time. Um, we're finally bringing it forward to you. Um, this policy is, um, we implemented, um, some new standards around evaluation. Um, we implemented some standards around, um, hiring practices, so we're now posting our hiring, uh, coaching positions on an annual basis. There's no auto renewal anymore. This has already been communicated to the coaches. So this is kind of a oops, uh, we gotta play catch-up here, um, but it is first reading for tonight. And this is really triggered in response to, um, some community feedback that we heard many, quite a, quite a while ago, yeah, at this point, so. Um, so with that, um, the policy committee recommends first reading of policies BEDH, Public Participation in Board Meetings, JICK, Bullying, and JJIBA, Hiring and Evaluation of Coaches, and I ask for a motion, please. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll open it up for discussion. Any questions or comments?
One comment, it's a, I don't know if something was struck from JJIBA, but you have two parts and you have part A, Hiring and Assignment of Coaches, and part C, Evaluation of Coaches. So was part B struck or?
Good question, Scott. I need to check.
Um, policy committee will take that back and figure that out and fix it. How about that?
Yeah, I'm assuming it probably just shouldn't be part.
Can we make, can we make note of that?
Hopefully not.
We have, sometimes we have word with the whole like pages conversion.
Um, and I also wanted to say regarding, um, the, uh, policy for public participation, I received a, um, a comment from somebody who was, was very active in the public participation and had initially been concerned, but, uh, attended a policy meeting and was, uh, thought the pop, the policy was respectful and, um, was gonna advance the cause of actually getting good participation.
That's great, and I, I, I really appreciate that she was there.
Actually, it was he.
Oh, it was a he. Well, okay, there was a she too. Um, but I appreciate all of the community participation in, um, policy committees.
There, there's a lot of discussion on that one and making sure that it was clear so it wasn't gonna limit anybody. We had a community member that came to the last meeting, wanted to finalize this one, share her concern, so.
And I would like to say, just because it's being recorded and people are probably wondering, we are, um, oh, at, as soon as, assuming this is, this will pass, there will be some changes in process in terms of signing up prior to a board meeting. So we have some way to evaluate how much we can anticipate public comment being. Um, so that if we need to restrict in order to do business, we will before public comment starts. But, um, that's gonna be a new process that we'll make sure we communicate when we finally get this through the adoption. Any other discussion?
Yeah, we didn't actually mention it, uh, anywhere in the policy, but we need to have some way, just in terms of the business of the meeting, if we are gonna limit them to three minutes, to let the speaker know how much time they have. So a clock or, or something along those lines. And I mean, it can be somebody's computer spun around with a big clock on it. But, um, it's, I, when I was testifying from like the legislature and all of a sudden, your three minutes is gone. It's amazing how fast it goes. It's very helpful to have a clock up there.
We had talked, there is some school districts that have.
We had conversation about it, but no specific action plan as to how to get it.
Yeah, maybe we can order one on Amazon Prime and have it for us.
For, for a large, uh, to me, Apple and iPad Mini that we may not all use anymore.
I don't think that would be appropriate. That might be a little intimidating. But yeah, I think that's a good idea. If, when we do determine the time limit is needed, we probably should have some way to let them.
Very helpful as a speaker. Hourglass.
All right, any other discussion?
Just to the point of, of the, the meeting policy, we actually did look at the state law regarding, uh, public meeting policies. And that's where the three-minute limit actually came from. So we were able to hijack some of the arrangement of that law, which, again, we're a public body, so we have to follow the rule anyway. To the point of being audited or having policy comply, it seemed to make sense that we were aligned with state law in that case.
Any other questions or comments? Great, all those in favor? Any opposed? And any objections? No, okay, unanimous, thank you. Uh, no old business, I see, so we'll go right into the new business.
So, under new business, you have my recommendation, we have, uh, in the audience this evening, we have Ambrosia, who's requesting a sabbatical leave. I think she did a great job in a very comprehensive nature, giving you that overview and, and advocating for herself. Principal Magnin, as I mentioned before, is at a workshop today, so I do want you to know that she's supporting that as well. I have met with Ambrosia. I would recommend to the board that we agree with her, um, request and grant the sabbatical with the caveat that that's contingent on final budget approval. And just, just let me clarify that. Working from a very cynical perspective, if we had budget dilemmas whereby we lost state money and we were looking at personnel levels or regressing with respect to personnel levels, I would not be able to support a sabbatical if those fiscal conditions, fiscal conditions were present. So that's why, why I've done that. Sabbaticals in our district are very rare. Matter of fact, I whispered the email earlier, the last one, I'm gonna guess, um, I always get dangerous with this, but I'm guessing the last one we have is probably eight or nine years ago. So that's not very frequent. Uh, I also included how this works with respect to the benefits of the person, half-salary, uh, benefits are prorated. They have to be here seven years, which Ambrosia's been. They have to return for two years or they forfeit all the other stuff that I mentioned. So that's basically how it works in a nutshell. So with that overview, I'd ask the board to, uh, acknowledge that we'll grant this sabbatical for seventeen eighteen with final approval contingent on the seventeen eighteen budget. Any questions, certainly I'll answer. And Ambrosia's here, Scott?
Well.
Uh, let's make a motion first.
I was gonna make a motion, um, that we approve the requested, um, leave, um, contingent upon the financial constraints you were talking about.
Second?
Second.
And discussion, do you have questions or?
Ambrosia, did you wanna make any comments?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, all right. Just wanted to give you the oppo, opportunity.
I, I did have one question. It, that, um, the, if something were to happen within the language department and, God forbid, she comes back, she's here for a year, and then all of a sudden, her position is cut. Hasn't been here for two years. She doesn't owe the money back if we lay her off.
I'd agree with that. That's never happened in my twenty-five years. But that's a good, that's a good point. I mean, that's a great point because again, you can't work from the premise everything's guaranteed and locked in. You never know.
I certainly don't wanna have any of those cuts, but if it were to happen, I certainly wouldn't have some hurt.
Well, you also probably saw in the language I gave you, let's say, let's say she came back and had a reduction in force.
Right.
She's not guaranteed the position she leaves as well. So you have a sense of what I call fluidity there based on the conditions that may be present at that point in time.
We hope for the best.
We'll hope for the best.
Wish you the best, so, um, so no more discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Ambrosia. Thank you for coming.
All right, do we have any, um, meetings that we need to set?
Yes, uh, finance committee. We definitely have, we have one, uh, reminder of December first at four PM in the central office. And looking possibly after that for December twelfth or December fourteen. That's okay. Which do you prefer? Which do you prefer? I prefer the fourteenth.
We now have five members.
I'm all, I'm for the fourteenth, though.
And what time you advocate it?
Four. Jessica?
Yep, that works great.
Actually, at four o'clock, I can't do the twelfth, so.
You can't do the twelfth, but you can do the fourteenth.
I can't do the fourteenth, yeah.
Okay. Jason?
As far as I know, should be.
So else we have?
John Conchell.
And Alan. So we go, four o'clock and the fourteenth, very good.
And what was the first call? December first, at what time?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock, too.
I think, other than that, Karen, it should be okay. Education's good, policy's good. The ad hoc on the Assistant Superintendent you mentioned, we'll probably schedule that the next meeting, so.
Yeah, once we figure out when we're going to.
Jessica, yeah.
All right, good.
Before, I'm sorry, before we move into executive session, I had meant to ask this at, during class time, and I hope it's okay if I sort of dial back, but the, the policies that we had for first reading today, you know, we, we discussed at one point in time actually having readings of the policies when we have a first reading. Would it be possible to have something like this put on with the agendas on, under the school board? You know, if you go to rsc22.us, and, and you have at least these policies, so that people can get a hold of them.
The general.
Have them right there accompanying the agenda.
Accompanying the agenda, so, I mean, actually, realistically, any exhibit that isn't privileged or, you know, personnel-related, if they're, if they're attached right there, so that anybody can see exactly what we're going to see.